Athletes, welcome. Ian Murray here, head coach of the LA Tri Club, USAT lead coach. And how many times, Colleen? How many times have I finished Wildflower? I can't even count anymore. These are all my Wildflower bids throughout the years. The number's pushing 30 and it's my favorite race on the calendar. And so we're here tonight and we're going to save this recording in the LA Tri Club YouTube channel so that people, as we approach Wildflower, it's May 2nd and 3rd, 2026, can come back and watch this video and understand every possible option about the race. So without further ado, we are super fortunate to have the race director of, and when I say a mom and pop organization, I'm talking about family run to its core. Colleen, thank you for being here. We're so grateful to you for putting on this race. Let's start, let's start.
Yes, glad to be here to share all about the race. I know it's a lot of dynamics to it and a lot of questions and we're here to simplify the process a little bit and help people understand it.
Perfect, perfect. Well, should we start with? How many races are there? Because there's single sport events now too. And what is the schedule? What happens on Saturday? What happens on Sunday? Do I have to be there on Friday? These kinds of fundamentals.
Yes, so we do have a full schedule of events that go out throughout the weekend. So there is a mix of triathlons, running events. We do have an open water swim that we've added. So if you look through the website, you'll see that we have a long course triathlon. We have an Olympic distance triathlon. We have an on-road sprint. We added a gravel off-road sprint last year, which Ian, you did that and you loved it. The great thing is, is these races all intersect with one another. So the gravel, the gravel sprint, it's on, the bike of that is on the long course run. And so when you're sitting around the campfire at night, you guys all get to talk about being on the same courses. We have the open water swim, which is the same swim course as the long course race. And so everybody's sharing a lot of those experiences throughout the weekend. And then on Friday, this is what a lot of people don't necessarily understand. There is a full schedule of stuff happening on Friday as well. So I like to tell people, if you have the ability to open up your timeframe, to come in on a Thursday night and enjoy everything that we have going on on Friday, there's clinics happening all throughout the day on Friday. So there's live entertainment that's happening, but there's also some open water swim clinics. There's some transition clinics. There's a nutrition clinic. There's some professional athletes that came in. Last year, we had Mark Allen that came in and did some talks as well as some other hands-on clinics that were happening on Friday, as well as Saturday on the main stage, as well as we have an additional stage that we created last year because there was so much demand for the topics that were going on. So it really is a true festival of stuff happening throughout the entire weekend, on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at the event.
In terms of multisport, I know that we're going to use the term long course to describe what is a half Ironman. And I'll just give it to you straight right now, athletes. It's one of the hardest half Ironmans and is the most challenging. Also, I would argue, the most beautiful. And for years, and I'm talking since Scott Tinley was my coach in 1996, the known quantity is if you're ready to finish long course at Wildflower, you can do anything you want for the rest of the season. If you got an Ironman goal in the summer or the fall, if you're ready for Wildflower long course, your training's right on schedule. So Saturday is the Wildflower long course. That's an on-road half Ironman. And that same day is the off-road sprint. That can be raced on either gravel bike or a mountain bike. Then Sunday, there is an on-road Olympic distance race and an on-road sprint distance race. So just in terms of multisport, those are the four events to choose from through the weekend. You could also, if you're super hardy, do a double. You could race the long course on Saturday, the sprint on Sunday. You could race the off-road sprint on Saturday, the Olympic or the sprint on Saturday. Like you can do whatever you want. So there's lots of options there. But as Colleen has said, there is, this all takes place in a state park that is live oaks dripping with Spanish moss, gagles of turkeys all over the place, deer, and it's in the spring. So the central coast rolling hills are just bursting with flowers and grass. And it's always stunning. And so it's a special time to be there. And the LA Tri Club capitalizes on the Redonda Vista Loop and everybody camps in that area. And we really share that experience. And so I just want to encourage you to look upon this weekend as a whole weekend and not just an individual event because there's a lot.
Yeah. The other thing we added last year that people really enjoyed is we added 20K trail run. And it's on the long course run. And so people were able to, you know, if they had another race they were doing, you know, either before or after that they couldn't do a full try or they moved over into trail running, that's on the long course run. It's a great one. And then for those of them who are bringing family members and stuff like that, in the evening, we have a 5K and a 10K. It's kind of an off-road, on-road fun run that we do in the evening. So it is something that if you're bringing family or friends with you, there's something else for them to do as well.
Okay, so now I want to get into the critical aspect of this because in this, Colleen and I have discussed this. I'm going to race five, six times next year and I'm going to have to travel to most of those. And so what I'll do is I'll go to the race website. I'll register and then I'll shut that page down and I'll open another page, which is about my favorite hotel chain where I'm getting points or whatever. And I'll figure out where I'm going to stay. I want to tell you that the first year I raced Wildflower, my wife Alexandra and I rented a hotel in the town outside of the park. We never did that again, ever, because you miss, you miss so much of what this thing is about. And I really want to encourage everybody to come into the park once, probably on Thursday, but if you have to, Friday, and then stay in the park until you leave Sunday night or Monday morning. That is the best way to get the full Wildflower experience. And to that end, we want to go down through all of these options. So I'm going to start with the crazy wrong option, which is yes, you can book a hotel in Paso Robles, spend the night there and drive in to race. If somebody does that, Colleen, what time do they have to enter the park before the road closes?
So the roads close, you have to be in the park by 7:30 in order to park and get down the hill. So you cannot, the roads, it's the same roads that we use for the event itself. So the roads do close between 8:00 AM and 2:00 PM. It's actually officially 3:00 PM, but they close between 8:00 AM and 3:00 PM each day in order to keep the cyclists safe.
Yeah.
And so there's only one way in and one way out of the park. So they do, they do do some roaming openings kind of later in the afternoon and stuff like that. But you just have to stay there throughout the day. And then once they open, you'll be able to get over in the afternoon. But there is no way to let you in after that timeframe.
Okay. And then I'm going to bring this up because it has the exact same explanation, which is closer than a hotel in Paso Robles would be the Airbnb townhouse condo type things that are at Lake Nacimento. Keep in mind, Wildflower takes place in Lake San Antonio. So closer than Paso Robles hotel would be these townhouses that you can rent in Lake Nacimento. But it's the same drama, which is you have to drive into the park very, very early in the morning to get in there before the road closes. And then you can't leave until the last rider is in through. And so that's very, very late. So you end up staying the whole time anyway. And then you have this additional hassle of not being there around the campfire with everybody. I only drink alcohol once every two years typically. And I had four margaritas on Saturday night after winning the off-road sprint. And that was a great experience for me to share. I mean, tequila for me is like an ayahuasca trip. So it was a fabulous experience for me. And I just want to, I want to recommend everybody that they come and let me make you a margarita on Saturday night. So you got to stay in the park. So then we get, so those are the two places you stay outside.
Yeah. So and just to give perspective on that, so the hotels in Paso Robles are about 45 minutes to an hour distance away. If you're looking at Nacimeno, you're probably looking at 25 to 30 minutes away. And then there's vacation rentals. And there is, there is vacation rentals that are at Oak Shores.
Oh, yeah.
And so that you can go to Oak Shores and those are about 10 to 12 minutes, which would be eight miles away. And so you can look online for Oak Shores vacation rentals. There's a link on our website for those. So those are a little bit closer of an option for those people who are like, well, I really, really, really need a house because that's just all I'm going to do. But they still want to be close enough to get and feel a part of the activities and be a feel a part of the LA Tri Club. So we certainly don't want to exclude people that just like, I can't go to this event because I have to stay in house. So that is an option. And so certainly go to the website and you can see that. That is the closest option.
Okay. So now I'm imagining like a scale down in the list. And the next one I want to touch on is, okay, you're going to drive an RV into, into the park. So let's discuss that, both an RV with a hookup parking spot and an RV that has no hookups, no electrical, no water, no nada. So talk to us about, yeah, and maybe they rent in LA and drive all the way up, or maybe they rent somewhere on the way in San Luis Obispo or whatever. So let's just talk about what that would mean.
Yeah. So RVs have come a long ways and there's a lot of different ways to do it. You can rent an RV from like an RV share. We do have a link on our website from that where you can find something that's online and you drive it up and you pack it with a bunch of friends and you guys drive together up. If you feel comfortable driving a recreational vehicle, you drive it up. Most of those vehicles are self-contained and you can use it for the weekend and then drive it back and you would be fine. And then the other option is RV delivery. And so with the RV delivery, which is what you did Ian last year, we're literally the RV company, you rent it from them. We have two partners that are on our website that is Getaway RV and Pismo Coast RV. And it would be the closest thing to a hotel on site, which literally means when you drive up, the RV is already set for you. It is already leveled. There's two chairs and a nice little mat for you outside. And you walk up and you open up and your bed's all set up and it's there for you. Now those, you do have to purchase an electrical hookup site. And that's something that I do want to point out kind of right away because with your rentals of your RVs, some people will require you to have electrical hookups and some people will say you're fine to be self-contained. So some people will own their own RVs as well and know about self-contained versus electrical RVs. So it really depends on how much you know about RVs and whether you're renting or whether you own your own. And so that's what you need to know. We do have limited hookup sites. And so when you're purchasing a hookup site, what you're purchasing is the ability to have the electrical so that when you either bring your RV or whether you're renting it from another agency, that when you arrive, there is full electrical for you. Now, one of the, one of the benefits of being part of the LA Tri Club is if you purchase an electrical hookup site and you work with the LA Tri Club, we work with them to help reserve some of those sites ahead of time and so that you guys can all stay together. But normally, traditionally, these sites are not reserved per se. We have, we have 60 of them that are for sale, that are just an electrical pedestal. What you are purchasing is an electrical site and they're on first come, first served. So that when you come in, you can drive in and you can pick up the next available electrical site. And I'll give a little background on why we don't normally reserve those for people who are bringing in their own RVs. So RVs are set up to where, some RVs pop out on the right-hand side and some RVs pop out on the left-hand side. And some have two pop-outs and some are Taj Mahals and they have four pop-outs. Well, this park has trees that go off in all different angles and stuff like that. And some of them are 20 feet long and some of them are 40 feet long. And some of them, so every site is not uniform. So if I were to go in and put a person's name on every single site, what would happen is when you drove up, somebody would say, well, this one doesn't fit my RV, but the one two over fits my RV. So I would be juggling all of these sites all the time. So what we say is we make sure that when you show up, that there will be an electrical site available for you, but you pick the next available site that fits your RV. So we are saving you an electrical spot and you choose the next available one that fits your RV. And that's kind of a key component of that.
Got it, got it. Okay. Then I think after the RV, the next level down is the bell tent. And I want to refer to Morgan's comment in the chat right now, which says, if you're a hotel person, I did the bell tents last year and it was basically as nice as a hotel. And my buddy Jim stayed in one last year and I peeked in. There's not a sleeping mat on the ground. There's a bed in there. Those things are stunning. It's glamping gone wild.
Yes. So I will explain a bell tent. And when we do a screen share at the end of this, I'll go over a little bit more. We have some drone footage we're going to share you guys tonight. And I have some photos we're going to share with you tonight. But the best way to decide a bell tent, it is not somebody coming in and setting up a tent for you. It is a full setup with a bed that is off the ground, full mattress with a duvet and full linens. So it is a hotel that has been kind of set up for you there. There is a host and a concierge so that when you come in, they, they walk you to your tent. They give you a lock. You lock it up at night. And so it has everything you kind of need. Aside from, I will point out that we did remind everybody that you do need to bring an extra battery for your phone. I just sent everybody a link for one of those satellite or those solar charging batteries. You set it out during the day, it charges, you put it on your phone at night and that's the best way to do it. But it is right next to where the LA Tri Club camps and it is a hotel and it is really, really comfortable. You will, may never go back to tent camping again once you stay in those.
And then the next option is what I just referred to as car camping, which is you grab up a tent, a pad, a bag, or you know, some comforter and your favorite pillow. It's not like you're going to walk the Appalachian Trail calling this stuff. So you can put all the comforts of home in there and then you come and just pitch your tent on a flat spot in the grass, right there in the center of the Redonda Vista E-Loop. And you're right in the mix with everybody. That works great for a lot of people. And I want to say this, if you're staying in the bell tents or if you're car camping, there are gorgeous, super clean porta potties and there's a ton of them. There was never a wait. And then there's also a trailer with hot showers. And those two things together just make it all so beautiful. Okay, hold on. Colleen, here's a question from Matt in the chat. If we contact one of the RV vendors on your site for rental and delivery, so that would either be Getaway or Pismo, how do we relay that we want them to park the RV in the LA Tri Club campsite?
So when you contact them, they'll ask you, they'll ask you, are you with a club? And you say, yes, I'm with the LA Tri Club. And so they coordinate with us. That's why we have specific partners. So if you go outside of those partners, they don't know to coordinate with us. And that's why we have specific partners.
Perfect, perfect. Okay. Is there anything I?
I will say that if you're going to work with those partners, they do usually require you to purchase that hookup site. And so those will sell out in the first week. And so we can go over the timeline of when I'm going to be releasing those. We did already launch to anybody who did race registration in September. Those invites went out yesterday, yeah, yesterday. So we're starting to release some of those invites. So you're going to want to, you're going to want to book that right away. If you're looking at doing that RV rental, you'll want to consider getting those, those electrical hookup sites right away.
Do you have a date when you're going to open up the, the next round of those?
Yes. So I'll go ahead and jump into that right now. So the schedule on those is, is anybody who did early registration, race registration in September should have already received their invite. If for some reason you don't see it, check your promotions folder or your spam folder. You know how all of our folders now are smart and they, they like to file things for us? Go ahead and look and see if you can find that it would say early invite. Look through your things, see if you can find that. If for some reason you can't find it anywhere, but you did do your race registration in September, go ahead and email events@wildfireexperience.com, say I cannot find it. They can resend you. It is a custom invite. And so it's directly related to your email. They'll look through your race registration and can resend that. So that's if you registered in September.
Okay.
Anybody who registered in October will get their invite in on Friday. So they'll start sending those out based on when you registered. And so those are all going to go out and you will have through the 14th. On Friday, the 14th, it will open up to the public.
Okay.
So if you did the early race registration, make sure to, to capture that, any of the, you know, the bell tents or any of those premium registrations prior to it opening to the public on the 14th.
I know last year you filled every full hookup site. You said you had 60, right? You filled everyone, right?
Yes, yeah.
Did you fill every bell tent?
Yes.
Okay. So what we're saying is all, many of these options will sell out.
Yeah. And we also, one of the, one of the ones that we did not go over yet that I want to bring up is Lakeside.
Oh.
Yes. So Lakeside is very similar to an electrical hookup. It's not necessarily in the LA Tri Club area, but it's something that people do like. And then they just shuttle up and down the hill. So they hang out with you guys at night. But then they like to be kind of down in the action for during the day. So it is an option. So if they want to do that, what it is, is, and we'll show you a picture of it as we kind of move on into more of the drone footage stuff. So you get to park your RV down directly in the transition area, which overlooks the swim start. And so you have some seating area overlooking transition and the swim start and the finish area so that you can kind of walk to everything while you're there. And then you can take either shuttles up and down the hill or take your car up and down the hill to the LA Tri Club area in the evenings and then come back down and be able to park down there during the day. And there is a generator hookup for those. So you do have electrical. And then you don't have the full hookup for like the sewer and stuff, but it does come with one pump.
Okay, great. That's great. All right. We're ready to share screens so you can bring on this, the drone footage. I'm excited to see this.
Okay.
Yeah, nice.
So I'm trying to think, the first thing that I'm going to show here is the, the road that I was talking about, I'm going to kind of zoom out here to a very, very large scale view of things. When you're coming in the park, you can kind of see here where Lake San Antonio is. And you can see that there's kind of this one road coming in. And when you come in, this is that San Antonio, Interlake Road is the G14 road right here. And there's this one road that comes into the park. So I'll kind of zoom in here a little bit more. And so San Antonio Road, you'll see why we have to close this road. It is the same road that the course is on. So there's only one way in. Now, one of the things that I left on, on this drone footage is this yellow line that you're seeing right here. This is the long course run. And I wanted you guys to be able to see that so you can see how the long course run intersects with so much of the camping area and is kind of the heart of everything that's happening throughout the weekend. But when you come in this main gate right here, this is San Antonio Road, right where you start to see some of our drone footage come into play right here. It's where you see the green in here. You'll see that we're starting to come in on the main road. So you come in through, we're kind of coming in this main gate. So when you're coming in, you're going to come into this main gate. This main gate is where they're going to scan your guys' QR code. So when you register, after you're done registering, it will send you a QR code that you'll be able to take a, and put in a digital wallet. One of the things to remember is every single person that's coming through this gate needs to register, whether they have a camping pass or whether they have a single day use pass. It's every single person in the car. So think about it as a concert versus a parking pass where you're just paying per car. It's more of a concert where everybody coming through needs to have a pass. So they'll scan you here and you'll come through the main gate. There is usually kind of a board that's set up here that has a list of all the tri clubs that are there and any messages that need to go up that kind of says where everybody's camping. Now you guys are a little unique because you're always in the same place. And so you don't have to go look at that board. You can kind of just go right past that board and you can go, okay, well, I know where we're at because we're always in Redonda Vista E-Loop. So you guys are going to drive in this road right here. I'm going to follow. And you can see this is where the run course runs right alongside here. But you guys are coming in early. So you're not going to interfere with the run course here. So you guys are coming in this road. Just giving you a little perspective here. I'm going to zoom out a little bit so that we can go a little bit faster along this road right here. Okay. And then the very first right-hand turn that you take after you come into the park here, this is known as Redonda Vista. So you guys will make this first right-hand turn and you'll come into Redonda Vista. And then you'll continue straight. And then you're going to make again the first kind of right main turn here. And this takes you up a hill. This is known as the amphitheater area here. This is also general parking. So for anybody that's coming in just for the day, so if you buy a single day pass, let's say that you're taking one of the options of staying at a hotel or staying at a vacation rental, any of those sort of things, this is where our staff will park you for the day. This is all set up as a general parking area. So they'll park you here and then from here, you'll go ahead and you'll come back. And I'll, as we're getting ready to talk about the festival area, I'll, I'll go over that a little bit more. But we're going to take you up to, we're just going to assume that everybody is coming in and they're camping for the weekend and they're going to go ahead and they're going to go up to the LA Tri Club area. So you're going up Redonda Vista, you're continuing up the hill. Now, when you continue up the hill, you guys are going to go into, you're going to make this right-hand turn into E-Loop right here. Now, everything isn't always necessarily marked, but LA Tri Club does normally have banners that they put up. It's going to be at the corners here. Right here, you will see, and I don't think that it's out yet, but there's normally, actually, this is them getting ready to place the shower units right here.
I love it.
This is the driver that's driving. So this right here is a restroom unit and the shower unit is right in front of this restroom unit. So you can see how centrally located everything is. But this right here is E-Loop. And what is great for me to show you about this map is how, with any of the options that we talked about with camping, whether you're a RV hookup, whether you're a bell tent, whether you're a tent camping, it's all within walking distance right here. So if you're an RV hookup and you're coming in and you're making a right-hand turn, you can see these spots right here are where you're going to be coming in and you're going to be parking and picking one of these spots that is not taken. So when you come in, you would come in here and go, oh, this spot is not taken. It says reserved. There's a tag. Now, there's a full other process that you're going to get descriptions of. I'm not going to go on in, in this call. But you would basically come, you would pull that tag and you would put your tag that you're given at the gate on here. And this would be your reserved spot. You back in and you'd be set. And you would come here and this would be the LA Tri Club area. If you're tent camping, you would park. This is the area that the LA Tri Club, they have a half of this area, but you guys would be tent camping right in this area right here. If you're car camping, many of them park right here and they car camp. So this is centrally located. And then if you are looking at the plush glamping bell tents, they are located right here. So all very centrally located. And all of them are individual bell tents that you come in. And I do have just a quick video that we'll show at the end of this so you can see what those bell tents look like. Now, the next thing that I want to show you guys, is there any questions? As kind of I show you guys all those central locations of all the camping areas as I'm zooming out a little bit to give you guys a little bit of an idea. This whole Redonda Vista area that I'm showing you right here, it goes all the way back over into this area right here. Every single tri club and individual that's general camping is all camping, all right here together. So it goes all the way where these various flags and stuff are. All throughout here is all where general camping is. So at night, what you find yourself doing is just walking around and talking to people and saying hello. Now, a couple other amenities that are around this area, these, these blue flags that you see, that's potable water. So we bring in water monsters. So if you bring an up one gallon jugs, two gallon jugs, five gallon jugs, you bring those up. We have potable water there for you. You fill those jugs, you take them back to your campsite. And so there's potable water there for you for the weekend. And we have water trucks that bring those in, and that way you don't have to worry about your drinking water in the park system and any of those sort of things. So that's brought in by us for the weekend. Uh, we already talked about the shower units that are available and the restroom units that are available for you. Uh, we talked about the parking area that's here. And then, um, the, the other camping areas and the other people that are camping. Now, if the E-Lupe ends up filling up, let's say the LA Tri Club takes advantage and gets just tons of these electrical sites. And they say, okay, well, we've filled up all of these areas, Colleen, where else can I get electrical hookups? Um, all of, there's other loops here, and right as you come in in A Loop, B Loop and C Loop, that you can go ahead and get any of these that are first available that fit. And, and these are flat sites as well, so that you can pick up these. And as you can see, all very much in walking distance, so that you can get, you know, back and forth to the tri club site, whether it be walking or whether it be on your bike or something like that. So everything's very centrally located and easy to get back and forth to. So before we go into how you get to the festival area and talking a little bit about the festival area, is there anything, any questions that you guys have about the camping areas while we're talking about that?
I'll just remind everybody that you can drive any car into this. Um, you don't have to be four wheel drive. Those roads are all paved that we've seen and it's, it's flat and it's easy to navigate.
Yes. Um, and then once you get there, if you don't want to necessarily drive, there are some van shuttles that are running during very specific hours, but they do run in the morning, they do run in the evening. So you just have to look at the van shuttle hours and they just run up and down the hill. Also, I do believe that the LA Tri Club had some vans that were taking bikes as well as people up and down the hill. Because you guys do have extra access that gets people up and down the hill to the festival area. If people want to just use their car for camping for the weekend and then not drive it for the rest of the weekend.
And, and just to be clear, for those of you who haven't done it, the festival is, I don't know, is it three quarters of a mile, Colleen, away from the Redonda Vista E-Lupe?
It's what?
Is it a mile? Is it three quarters of a mile?
It's, it's just a little bit over a mile. It's a walking hill down.
Yeah, okay. Um, Nathan asked a good question. Is there cell service? And he says, I prefer to be offline, but if I have to, and I would say this, down at the festival site, I got clear Verizon service all the time. Up at our campsite, it was a little spottier, but if I, if I hiked up on a hill, sometimes it got better. So yeah, there's, there's connectivity there.
Yeah, there's connectivity, um, dependability, like it's, it's off and on.
Yeah.
So I, I like people to know that sometimes it takes walking to a specific campsite to get exactly what you need as far as reception goes. So sometimes it's better just to send the out of office reply message to people. And then, uh, if it works, it works, so.
It sounds like the perfect balance. You can get in touch in the case of emergencies, but you got an excuse to be offline.
Yeah, that's perfect. That's perfect.
Yes.
So take us down the hill, Colleen. Let's have a look.
Yes, so, um, we're going to go ahead and, and kind of zoom out a little bit and go down to the festival area. So, uh, this is, there's a walking trail. You can see kind of, if I'm zooming out, there's two buildings that are right here. You can see a walking trail that's kind of going down the hill right here that will get you into the festival area. Um, now, if you're on the long course, you're on the bike or on the run, there's a whole different route. That's a very long, steep hill that, um, I won't show you that route right here. You get to experience that when you get there. No, we actually will do, there's, there's going to be a fun, um, course ride that we're going to be presenting in a YouTube video later on down the road. Um, but yes, you will ride down this hill and this is our main festival area. And this is probably one of the treats that's great about our race is once you get down to the festival area, one of the things that you'll see is, um, there's a transition area right here. This is that lakeside camping that I was talking about. Um, this is before people had all arrived. Um, so there's a few people that had come in here, but each of the spots, you can see they kind of come in and then this, this wraps all the way around. I have a video that we'll end with that will show how everybody's lined up here. But, uh, we park all the, the RVs along the outside and then there's athlete parking on the inside. This is the transition area. This is the finish chute that's right here. This is the expo that goes along here, but if you're standing here at the finish line, you can see the swim start, you can see the transition area, you can see the finish line. Athletes that are going out on the bike come through this finish line and go out. Um, our packet pickup is actually right here underneath this tree at the resort area here. And then one of the things that is hard to pick up in this drone footage is because it's underneath the trees, which on a warm weekend, you're really going to appreciate that it's underneath the trees. But our festival area is right here underneath these trees is known as Expo Area Two. And underneath these trees is known as Expo Area One. So all of the clinics and the yoga festival and everything that's happening is in this Expo Area One. Right here is the, the yoga tent that we had, and so there's classes. And the yoga is not just yoga, so there's stretching classes that are going on, uh, pre and post race. And so there's, there's a lot of stuff that can be helpful for all kinds of, um, workout type stuff that's going on throughout the weekend. And then there's a main stage with the entertainment. There's all food trucks along this outside area right here. Um, yes, there is coffee vendors. Um, yes, there is gourmet food trucks. Um, yes, there's a wonderful wine and beer, um, garden that's there as well. Um, there's a playground for anybody that's, that's coming with children, um, that's available. And then our expo that goes, um, all around in Expo Two as well as Expo Area Three right here. So there's lots of people that are coming up, everything from gear to bikes to Normatec to, uh, I mean, there's all kinds of stuff that's, that's there for the weekend. Uh, our swim start is right here, so they'll be going off, they swim out in the water out here. And then our swim finish is right around in this area. So that's kind of the festival area on a broadside view. And then what is great is we have all of this footage of the entire park. And so what you will be seeing over the next six months is we are going to be releasing various components of this course and of this drone footage to our YouTube channel. And you'll be able to see some different course preview stuff based on what we were able to collect through all of this. So, um, you can see that. So I can show really quickly while we're on here. Um, because this, for those that were not there. Um, and this, we don't have to show the whole video, but I think that it will at least give you guys an idea of.
Is this, is this the Olympic swim maybe?
Yeah, so it will. It's going to pan back. So this is the swim right here, but it will pan back to the start in just a second. I believe it's going to pan back to the start. There we go. That's what we want to show you. So, so that's going to pan back. So you can see the, the lakeside camping area that I was showing you. You can see the parking area that's down there. And that is open first thing in the morning. So what we do is people who want to drive down there, um, they will fill that first until it's filled and then they will close it and do the parking up above. Uh, the swim start, the swim exit, uh, there are porta potties that are down there, um, in the morning. So it gives you a little bit of idea of the parking area. The water monsters that I was talking about are down in that area. The transition area is set up by wave start. And so you can go ahead and choose your bike rack location based on your swim wave start. This shows you our kind of infamous long, uh, finish line that we have and we're known for there. So this is prior to anybody finishing, and so there's not the huge crowds that normally line the finish chute there. But as you see, the cyclists will end up going through that prior to the finishers going through that. But you can see how everything's kind of centrally located there. So and it will show a swim start go off here. Uh, anybody who buys VIP passes, you have access to the dock. Um, so if you're interested in getting VIP, that's one of the things that you can add to the upgrades for, whether you're general camping, you're premium camping. You will get access to the dock if you're interested in doing that.
Every year I've been there, it's been a wetsuit legal swim, but the water temperature is not cold. It's really pleasant. It's a really lovely swim and you can tell.
And there are some people that don't wear, I mean, not everybody is in a wetsuit, so you, it can be done without a wetsuit. Um, but a lot of people do choose to wear the wetsuits and, and we have always had. I think the only time that we've not been wet suit legal is just for the elite race, because they have different requirements and it's only been once.
Watching this video is getting me pumped. I did the long course last year and coming back for seconds.
Yeah.
This year.
Oh, that's awesome.
I, I did the Olympic last year. Wildflower was the best. Uh, and I, I, I can recognize, I recognize all these places.
Mas, you're probably in the water here, one of these swimmers.
Yeah, because I, my slow is so slow, you mean that I probably, I've got to be in the video somewhere, right? No, it, Wildflower is awesome.
I realize my Zoom, uh, chicklet is actually the photo from one of the photographer spots.
Oh, yeah.
Big picture.
That's you on the run course of Wildflower.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's hard to describe Wildflower, the course, or the distance between things and, and stuff like that. So I always like to be able to show people as much as we can, a little bit more of the videos and the photos and stuff to give people an understanding of some of this stuff. So hopefully this helps a little bit. There's the coffee truck right there, everybody knew, and the stairway of champions. It goes up in between the swim area and the finish line.
There's a stairwell that's just going to come into view on the left, just there. That's the start of the long course run. That's the start of every run.
Yes, where you see that marquee swimmer coming out of the water right there, that's the wood thing. So that gives you a little bit of an idea. The other one that could be helpful for those of you who wanted to know. Um, I don't think that, that's not the one with the, I don't think that one has the interior of the bell tents. I do have one that has the interior of the bell tents, just a second. This may tempt a few of you when you see this, because when I, when they set these up, I was actually kind of shocked. And to be honest, a little jealous. Because this is certainly nicer than where I stay. So these are the bell tents here. And these are the ones that are literally just right down the area from where a lot of you guys stay. Um, they're pretty large tents and so we're limited. Right now, we have twenty-five of those. We have the ability to, if we sell out of these by December, I have the possibility of adding ten more, but that thirty-five is the max that we can even fit in the area. So what's great about these is you'll see that the entrance of these is all faced a little bit different. So it's not like people can really look into each other's tents. They're pretty private when you come over there. Uh, and the run course is right there on the right hand side when you saw the, the drone kind of panning through that area. Uh, so now it's on the left hand side, the run course that's coming right through there. It's going to come back, the drone will come through here. And after it's done, coming back through one more time, it will zoom in and show you the interior just slightly of one of these tents.
And you can see the shower, so that white trailer in the distance there, how close the showers are. And the whole LA Tri Club program happens on the other side of that, that brick building right there.
Yes, it kind of peaks in, in one of these. I will say that if you go to our website, there, there is photos in each of those. But yes, you can see there's a full bed, there's a lantern, there's a night table. There's, there's more than, uh, there's, I can definitely tell you there's more than my kids' door brooms have these days.
Yeah, those are great. Those are great.
So a little bit of an idea, hopefully tho- those photos and videos gave you guys some perspective of all the different offerings that we have available.
Colleen, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Um, do we have any final questions? Race related, registration related, uh, housing, camping, anything?
I, I have one question. Um, you know, there were some, there were some public bathrooms right around where the LA Tri Club had their tents and things. But I believe they were always closed. Do you think if, if those will be open or, or no?
No, they won't. Um, the ones that we have are cleaned on a regular basis. Those are not. So we, we, instead of supplementing, we replace those with bathrooms that we have that are cleaned on a regular basis.
Thank you. It, it was great last year and for this year. Thank you.
I know. It's hard to, is it last year? Is it this year? Is it, yeah? Yeah, so we, we do have the same company that's coming back. We were very fortunate to team up with a great group that kept them clean and had great shower units and stuff like that. So all of those same services will be back again next year.
All right, I'll. Any other questions?
I think Morgan has one.
Hi, um, I was wondering, are there any course, uh, cutoff times that you could share for us the different races?
Yeah, so there is a place on the website that has all of the course closures. Let me find. It's under Race Info. I'm, I'm looking for the, so if you go on our website, um, under Race and then Race Info, and then on the left hand side, you click Course Closures, they'll list them all in there. And then that way you can look, because there's, there's, there's cutoffs per race and then per leg. And so it's easier just to go through and, and look at each of those.
Uh, just to confirm, if we signed up in October, you said the emails to reserve the campsites.
They go off Friday.
Okay.
And then you have until the fourteenth, till it becomes open to the public.
Gotcha. And should we reach out to one of the RV companies beforehand or what do you suggest?
Uh, I would reach out to them, um, right away, just because they're already listed on there. They're already taking reservations.
Right.
Um, and I know that, you know, they have limited.
Trailers.
They, yeah, they have limited inventory of those and they've already started taking reservations.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Yeah, Matt, I booked one with Pismo, which is one of the companies listed on the site a couple of days ago. Um, and he was actually just texting me during this as I confirmed the reservation, saying they have a handful left, but they're, they're going quick. So good to get in touch with them now.
Thanks, Nate.
Yep.
Colleen, thank you. Thank you for this call. Thank you for bringing this event back. Colleen, thank you. Thank you for this call. Thank you for bringing this event back. I'm just so thrilled. Thank you for everything. And um, we'll see you in May.
Yes, and we'll continue, continue to watch our, you know, between our blog and our newsletters that are going to be coming out, each of the emails that you're going to be getting, it will say, you know, add us to your contact list so that we don't end up getting put into your promotions folders and stuff like that. We like to go ahead and partition the information. So a lot of the stuff that you will see on the website in your athlete newsletters will end up partitioning it to you so that things like course closures and festival information and schedules and all that kind of stuff gets, you know, put out there on a regular basis, a little bit more in chunks. So that makes it easier for you to digest a lot of it. And we have some new stuff that we're going to be doing that we're really excited about. So as we have those announcements, we'll be announcing them. Follow us on our Instagram account. That's usually where we announce things first. Uh, we also just launched our, our Wild Stories podcast. And so when we have new stuff that we're doing or we have stories that we're doing, we'll throw it on there and we'll also put it on our blogs. We'll be doing some training stuff on that as well.
Thank you again, Colleen. Appreciate it.